Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll get started. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on February 28, 2023, and ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Present.
Commissioner Henderson.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Bray.
Present. Just one comment. You know, we've opened up the commission meeting for public comments from people on issues, so just read this so people are aware. I think most people are aware, but any member of the public who wishes to make comments to the Board of Commissioners is asked to fill out a public comment sheet and place it in the box located at the end of the Commissioner's desk on the left side of the Commission Chambers. And I'll call on you to speak during the public comments section of the agenda. However, if your comments are pertinent to, if they are synced up with a discussion point on the agenda, or they apply to a certain, something that's being discussed on the agenda, then I'll allow your comments kind of synced up with that. So, and we've got several people that want to speak tonight. I'll ask Commissioner Gess to please give our invocation, and then we'll stay standing for the plate delinquents.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful change of seasons and just prepare our hearts for tonight. And I want to thank every, each and every person in the city, and that they will just see that each and every decision made up here is truly thought through, and we have the best interest of each and every person. We love you and thank you for all that you do.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, City Manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
None this evening, Mayor.
Okay. We'll start off with, we've been looking for a time to do this, and so we're probably would have liked to have done it, you know, maybe a month ago, but we've got some awards for, for some of our employees. They're called Love Awards. Pam, are you going to take us from here?
I sure will. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, Assistant City Clerk. This is the fourth year for us to present our Love Awards, and that stands for Living Our Values Every Day. These are awards to recognize employees who wholeheartedly embrace the city's organizational values. We have six organizational values, and they are working to make a difference. This is a very special award process because employees nominate fellow employees, and then we take all the nominations. A small committee of previous Love Award winners then has that hard job of trying to determine who is going to get the award for this year. So we have six awards. We have six values, and so we have an award per value. And I would like to invite City Manager Jordan and Mayor Bray, if you want to come up to the front to do the presentations. I will announce each award winner, the value, and I'll read a portion of the nomination form for these wonderful awards. The first value is action-oriented, and the person receiving this award is Keith Riley. And Assistant City Manager Michelle Smullen is going to take the pictures for us. And the value action-oriented says, "We believe Paducah leads through responsiveness, positive forward momentum, and a thirst to always improve." Some of the nomination form says, "Keith is Paducah's flood wall superintendent." That's his music. When Keith hears rain in the middle of the night, he gets up and checks the river level. Keith is responsible for the proper running of 12 pump stations that protect Paducah from the water of the Ohio River. He's constantly checking the river level, inspecting the condition of the pump plants, and ensuring the plants are adequately staffed during heavy rain events. Keith and the flood wall employees work constantly to actively maintain the flood wall, the levee, and the pump stations. They inspect everything from tree growth on the levee to the sluice gates under Jefferson Street. Keith makes sure the small and large things get done, so the rest of us can worry about mowing the lawn after the next rainstorm. Congratulations, Keith. The next value is customer experience, and the recipient this year is Melissa Franklin. Come on up. And this value is, "We believe in providing excellent service delivery for both our internal and external customers through a welcoming and respectful environment." And Melissa works in the Public Works Department. She takes care of our city buildings and the people in them. Part of the nomination form says, "Melissa is a very unassuming conscientious city employee. She's very cheerful when she comes into the office, always asks if there's anything that is needed. She makes sure the offices are clean and that the Commission Chambers is in top condition for Commission meeting nights. She recognizes when things need to be done without your having to ask her to do something. She also is very quick to lend a hand when you do ask for help. You never hear her complain, and she wants to make sure the job is done right." Thank you, Melissa. The next value is, "Every Person Matters," and we have 15 members of the Paducah Fire Department here. We have Joseph Burton, Greg Cherry, David Denton, Stephen Glisten, Matthew Graves, Rodney Hall, Ronnie Hines, Jonathan Holzfeld, Kerry King, Chief Kyle, Shaila McKinney, Cody Murphy, Nicholas Nolan, Joseph Smith, and April Tinsman. And this value states, "We believe that every member of Team Paducah is critically important as we strive to accomplish our mission, and every person that chooses to live, work, and play in our city matters." And here is the nomination form, a part of it. "On December 10, 2021, the above firefighters went into action as soon as they received the call to go to the Candle Factory in Mayfield to search and rescue those who were in the building when the devastating tornado hit. These men and women performed a selfless act and saved many lives due to the training, knowledge, and skills they put into action. To hear their stories will break your heart, but it will also comfort you in knowing the talent that we have in our community is the highest caliber. These men and women displayed 'Every Person Matters' to an extreme and represented the city with honor." Thank you so much. Our next award is for fiscal responsibility, and it goes to Erica Gibson in our Finance Department. And this value is, "We believe in the prudent stewardship of public funds." Erica is a revenue technician. She was hired in August 2019 and promoted to Revenue Technician's Two last summer. Part of the award nomination states, "Erica has a great attitude, a can-do spirit, professionalism, maturity, and an excellent revenue systems knowledge. She's a stickler for accuracy, a problem solver, smart, and deliberate in all she does. Recently, Erica came up with productivity improvements and workflow suggestions that have already saved finance, hours of labor, postage, and material costs. Erica implemented a massive cleanup of a program which holds data for more than 10,000 business accounts. Erica called unrenewed accounts seeking good mailing addresses to cut down on mail returned by the postal service. We've been able to close out hundreds of inactive, no longer in business accounts, saving staff time and resources. Erica also completed an extensive audit of sales by the McCracken County Master Commissioner. She found numerous real estate tax bills that should have been removed from the city's property tax system, thus cutting postage, materials, and staff time." Thank you, Erica. Our next award recipient is for personal accountability, and this goes to Nathan Jamet in the Police Department. And this value is, "We believe in holding each other accountable to ensure our core values are intentionally fulfilled as we strive to carry out our mission." And part of Nathan's award nomination states, "Nathan Jamet at the Paducah Police Department wholeheartedly embraces the value of personal accountability through his dedication to those around him. Nathan has spearheaded the 50 Days of 5K's campaign, a citywide wellness incentive to get employees active and ending the year on a healthy note. He challenges his peers to push themselves further physically and professionally. Nathan makes himself available to his peers and is always available to help whether at work or at home." Thank you, Nathan. And our last award goes to two people. This is for the value solution-driven, and it goes to Tina Cooper and Caitlin Wells in the Technology Department. This value states, "We believe in proactively working together to discover innovative solutions that meet our current and future needs." Part of the award nomination says, "Caitlin and Tina took on the daunting task of maintaining IT support for the entire city when staffing changes occurred." It was just the two of them. "They stepped up when the organization needed them and were proactive in solving problems, meeting the city's needs, and providing exceptional customer service." Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations, everybody, and thank you for being here. Okay, from here, we're going, we've got a couple of special recognitions, opportunities for a couple of team members. And I'll let our City Manager talk a little bit about the particular situation, and then I'll take it up from there.
As the public may be aware and seen through media reports, you know, earlier this year, we had a couple of our team members that were out doing their regular duties, serving the citizens of this community. And they noticed an individual mistreating an animal, and they took it upon themselves to act appropriately and accordingly and report that. And in doing so, that, that individual was determined to have created some violations of law. And, you know, sadly, the, the animal was, was not able to be saved, but it does just go to underscore what the expectations that we have of our team members, that they go over and above, and we see that daily. And these are two individuals that we wanted to especially call out tonight.
So in recognition of both Jared Griffin and Stephen Cheswick, the Commission has penned a letter of commendation for each of you, and I'll just read the first one. The letters are identical, but it says, "The Paducah Board of Commissioners would like to thank you for your contribution to the safeness, I'm sorry, to the safety and wellness of our community. You went above and beyond when you witnessed the animal abuse incident on Jefferson earlier this year and reported it to authorities. Your willingness to help outside of your normal job duties embodies the spirit of public service. I understand that it was a painful and difficult situation to witness. However, I am inspired that you did not look the other way and decided to find a way to help the animal through your act of compassion. This exemplary service to Paducah is appreciated and did not go unnoticed." The Board is presenting you with this letter of commendation as our mark of appreciation for your actions on behalf of our community. We are thankful to have you as a member of Team Paducah. So Jared and Stephen, you want to come up? And I'll give these to you. Okay, before we get into the meat of the agenda, we'd like to ask John Perkins to come forth and give a six-month financial review of the city of Paducah. Senator Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I assume we're going to have PowerPoint up here.
We're working. A little delay.
Yeah. Lindsay warned me about this. Well, is my mouse not working?
Yeah, it was at the top of the screen there. I have to use the computer. Just like at home.
Yeah.
I always have a backup.
Have to call your grandkids and John to fix it.
How do I make you go forward? Hit the arrow?
The clicker.
Is this the clicker?
Do you want to make it to one slide?
To start the...
In presentation?
Presentation. Yeah, let's do that. Good point. So did you hear the one about the three-legged dog?
Oh, yay!
Get our technology director to... Would you like me to control it for you?
Sure.
Next slide, next slide. Yeah, 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 yeah. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager Jordan. And I understand you're the Assistant City Clerk.
And IT extraordinaire, evidently.
With your assistant in. Okay. We're going to talk about the general fund tonight. This presentation focuses on the general fund for the first six months of fiscal '23, which ended December 31 of 2022. I need to warn you that the results are not audited. Go ahead. Okay. First, I want to take a look at the revenues. Go ahead. Okay. I know some of this will be difficult to see. I have handouts if you need them. They're probably not a whole lot better. Revenues for the first six months of the fiscal year that we're in right now were at about $21 million, and they're broken down in the following manner. Now, you can see in the pie chart, I've got the big ones marked out. Licenses and permits, about $13 million. I'm rounding on these. Property taxes, $6 million. In the balance of that $21 million, about $2.3 million, made up of grants, charges for services, rental income, interest income, things like that. Go ahead. Now, let's take a look at the, what I call major revenues. Now, every month or so, we provide the KPI, T-Wall, and in that, we look at the four major revenue sources, and we also look at the four biggest departments. And this is kind of a, this will be a snapshot of the major revenue sources. This group of accounts makes up about 81% of all of our income of the $21 million. This makes up about $17 million of it, again, for the first half of the year. That $17 million is broken down to employee payroll tax, about $9 million, insurance premium taxes, about $3 million, business license fees, about a half a million, real estate, real estate property taxes, right at $4.5 million. Next. And then, I guess, to give it relevance, you want to be able to compare to what it was the year before. Go ahead and click again. The biggest change was in the category called Employee Payroll Taxes, where we increased from last year to this year by $723,000. That's a, that's a solid increase, and that's about just shy of 9% increase. Now, but what you've got to remember, put it in perspective, we're comparing this year to last year. Last year, we were still in COVID, so you got to go way back. And so that may account for why it's such a large swing. We'll take it. And then it's followed by real estate, property taxes of about $447,000. This change is maybe due in large part to an increased tax base, and could be some timing. And by timing, I mean, the taxpayer, our taxpayers had the ability to pay first and second halves. So if you decided to pay all of your first and your second half before the end of the year, then it could swing and make the first half look bigger than it normally would be. Well, overall, we believe property taxes have gone up regardless. It's just a matter of timing. An account that was kind of a surprise when we were looking at the budget a year ago this time, we had no clue this was going to happen, but interest income, and I believe we got that list, we have that listed up there too, that has increased by $416,000. And that's the first half of the year. Interest rates on our demand account, our checking account, have increased dramatically in recent months, and I'm sure you've seen it too in your accounts. From, in December of 2021, our demand account rate was 0.55%. And then all the way to December of '22, our demand account, again, demand account's your checking account, went to just north of 4%. That's a 7.5-fold increase compared to 12 months earlier, and that's pretty amazing. I know on the other side of that hurts people that are trying to borrow money, but if we have, if you have any money just sitting around, as you see all the time, you can see people are buying CDs, and I saw one just this morning, you can buy one for 11 months at $4.16, something like that. I mean, you haven't seen that in a long time. COVID pretty much killed it all, but it's coming back with the vengeance. Go ahead. Now I want to talk about expenditures. And some people ask the question, what's the difference between an expense and expenditure? And here's the, here's the textbook definition. An expense recognizes the consumption of a cost, while an expenditure represents the dispersment of funds. And that's what we're talking about, dispersment of funds. Go ahead. The general fund expenditures are broken down by department. Go ahead, do it again. This is a little more busy than the revenue one, but I'm going to try to focus just on the big, the big dogs on the porch here. The four biggest departments, again, these all come out in the KPI, they make up 74% of the general fund. 74%. Police at $6 million, fire at $5, public works at 2, parks at 1.7, and then that's followed by interfund transfers about 1.7. And then everything else makes up the balance of that. About $4 million or about 18% of the general fund makes up all the other departments together. Go ahead and click. So how do we compare to the year before? Year before would be fiscal '22. Go ahead. This is a little more difficult to see, but I think we have the bright colors. You can kind of see the difference. The blue column was, is last year, the first six months of last fiscal year. The yellow column, which is to the right, represents the first six months of this fiscal year, so you can kind of do a comparison. Overall, the general fund expenditures were 7% greater in this year than they were compared to a year ago, same time period. The greatest change in dollars was $495,000 increase for the police department, followed by fire of $291,000. The greatest change as a percentage was the technology department, which was 25% up, and the parks department, about 12.5%. Go ahead. Next, we'll take a look at the general fund expenditures by type. Good, yeah. This slide shows expenditures by expenditure type. So we have personal services, commodities, contractual services, interfund transfers. Personal services are just that, wages and fringe benefits. They made up about, they make up about 67% of all expenditures. Wages in this particular time period are about $8 million, benefits are about $5 million. Again, I'm rounding, but those are, they'll give you some relevance here. And then on a side note, CRS, which is a pension plan, you know, for many, many years, we were paying more and more and more every year, and I think it was going up about 12% a year. CRS actually just by itself went up by $381,000 just during this first six months. So it'll double in the next six months. Fortunately, we've been given really good news that next year, when we do the budget, that's leveled off, and hopefully it'll stay that way. The next category, largest category is commodities, just shy of $3 million. That's where we categorize fuel, utilities, upkeep, and repairs, and things like that. Next category is contractual services, about, excuse me, just shy of $2 million. That category contains insurance, legal, animal control, and maintenance experience, things of that nature. And then the last category is interfund transfers. That's the category where we take money out of the general fund and we share it with other funds. Go ahead. And since you asked, what are interfund transfers? Interfund transfers in this first six-month cycle... Interfund transfers in this first six-month cycle made up about $1.7 million. Go ahead, do it again, please. Yep, thank you. The general fund transfers $1.7 million, transferred $1.7 million in the first six months for a variety of reasons, including debt service, which makes up the vast majority, gets a million dollars. That goes to the debt service fund to pay off two major fund issues. One, the police and fire pension fund, about half a million dollars for that a year. And we've already paid that for the whole year, so that's what that, that's what that is. And then, the other part of that million dollars, a little over a million, half a million, is the bond issue we floated in January of 2020. That's the one that we changed our mind, and now we're working on getting that. It's going to be for the sportsplex, the airport, and yet to be named. About $270,000 was transferred into the 911 fund. And again, to give you an idea, on the pension fund, police and fire pension fund, that's an old, local pension fund, and we still have to subsidize that until all the members pass. And that, that's about $260,000 a year. Go ahead. And in summary, go ahead, do it again, please. I need, want to know the answer to the question. And the answer is, and the question is, how are we doing? The answer is, we're in a good place for the first six months. Revenues are close to where we had hoped they'd be, are very close. And of course, they could always be better. And expenditures overall are less than, or close to what we had expected. Go ahead. That's really it in a nutshell. Try to keep it as sure as I could. Yes, sir.
How long is that pension fund going to last? I know it's an actuarial thing.
Uh- Think the young, maybe you can gauge it based on the youngest person. And the youngest person is younger than me. They're about 57-ish. So it depends on how long he lives. And how long their spouse lives after that. So I recently looked at what they predicted it would be many years ago, like 2040, but we'll see.
When was that established?
Back in the 50s.
Yeah.
Back in the 50s.
Quite some-
Yeah.
And everything else has gone over to CERS?
Right, right. There was, there wasn't a state plan at that time, so all the local governments came up with two different plans. The AEPF, which is a point of employment, be like us. And then the non, then the public safety, police and fire. And they were set up in the 50s and maybe 40s. And they were in place until probably CRS came along in the middle 80s, I think. Early 80s, I'm not sure which. When I showed up in '91, there was still a little tussle between those that were still in the old plan, that wanted to migrate to the new plan, and a fight over that. And we had a number of people that you could choose to not go to the state plan, and there were a number of people that chose not to, but then later on, they realized that they made a mistake. And that's what the pipe was about. So, and many of those people have now been retired probably 20 years.
And there was another fund too, which is now expired.
Yes, the last person passed away in the last 18 months. Yes.
John, the $271,000 that we transferred out of the general fund to, for 911?
Yes.
That's not the total cost of 911 for the six, for the first six months, right? That's just-
No.
What, what was, we were short when we got money from the state, from cell phones and the $1 fee.
Right. What, the way that works, Mayor, the 911 need about 2.2 to 2.3 million. And if the, like you said, the CMRS, which is the cellphone money from the state, or local cellphone tax, the city and the county both have that. What that doesn't cover, the city and the county governments have to, you know, belly up to the bar and write a check. And the 271 is not even necessarily half of what we're going to owe. We try to not contribute until we have to. So I, I think that number's, I forget off the top of my head, probably $800,000 for the whole year.
Annually, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
And, and growing, yes. And the county is a, a like number, but not as big as ours.
Okay. So I just remind all of us, you know, that bids for 911 are due March 1st. So, you know, we'll, you know, I'm sure Darren and Steve and the judge and I will be taking a look at those soon, and hopefully, we'll begin to make some more progress. Any other questions about the, the budget for six months? All right, thanks, John. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you all.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
You're welcome.
For your help in moving, moving the slides.
Is this the one you want?
Yep.
So now, we'll move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. City Clerk will read the items recommended for approval. Would any Commissioner like an item removed for separate discussion? So I'll go ahead and ask the City Clerk to please read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the February 14, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, receiving filed documents, personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing an application for a technical assistance grant through the National Park Service Rivers, Trails, and Conservation Assistance Program, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to SANK. A municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to issue a request for bids to replace computer network switches and routers. A municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to issue a request for bids to make updates to Fire Station Number Two.
So moved. Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
So we'll start out with a resolution. I'll let the City Clerk read it, and then we'll discuss it briefly.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Opposing the Passage of Senate Bill 50 and House Bill 50 Relating to Partisan Local Elections."
So moved. Second.
So there is a bill in the House and Senate that would make local elections like ours, if passed, partisan, meaning that we would be involved in, you know, sort of the Democrat-Republican discussion out there. Our elections all over the state of Kentucky with our form of government, city commissions are, are nonpartisan elections. And I believe, I've talked with J.D. Chaney at KLC, he does not believe that this, that this, that either of these bills will pass. But nonetheless, I felt like it was something that we need to discuss among ourselves and, you know, discuss and make sure that we were all aligned. I personally believe that we're a lot better off in a nonpartisan environment, you know, being able to focus on city issues as city issues and, and not having some of the other discussions, you know, get, get in our way. But, but that's just my feeling. But I wanted to bring it up. Again, J.D. didn't think that it was probably going to get passed, but you never know. And I thought it was a good opportunity for us to weigh in, so.
I'll just say, we have the authority now. If we wanted to do that, we could. But to do this goes against what we would call home rule in allowing our city commission to run the city and make those decisions. So I, I mean, I, I think we should oppose it. If we wanted to do it, we could.
I would concur on that. There's, you know, a lot of partisan politics is dysfunctional, and I don't think that we need anything like that at our level. Politics, I mean, party politics doesn't have a lot to do with whether or not someone's trash gets picked up or a sidewalk gets put in, that sort of thing, so.
I agree. I don't think we need to get distracted with the party, along the party lines.
Mr. Gess?
I agree also. I talked to Senator today, and he, he agreed. He didn't think it was going to go through, and I'm kind of wondering. But, but yes, I, I think probably 90% of what we do, doesn't matter what party we're, we're affiliated with.
Okay. Then I'll ask the City Clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
All right, we'll make sure. It's yes to oppose, no. That's what he, when I was-
Correct.
Yes to oppose.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Bray?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Gess, for making that clear to us.
Well, I wish that was, yeah, it's good.
You confused me, actually, when you brought it up, so.
It's a high vote.
Yeah. It was an high vote, yeah.
Okay, the next item on the list is a municipal order to approve the relocation of Dog Park. And so I'll ask the City Clerk to, to read it, and then we'll discuss it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Accepting the Recommendation of the Paducah-McCracken County Athletic Complex Design Team to Relocate the Dog Parks in Stewart-Nelson Park to Noble Park in accordance with the interlocal agreement for the development and operation of the Paducah-McCracken County Athletic Complex."
So moved.
Second.
Amy?
Good evening. In January, the city manager and I brought to you a recommendation from the sports complex design team for the potential relocation of the Dog Park located in Stewart-Nelson Park. Since then, we've had the design team kind of do some site selection with us. And then Jeff Cantor's here tonight with Pec Flannery to give us that presentation on those four sites that we looked at in Noble Park.
And if I may, Jeff, before you start your presentation, just to remind the, the commission, under the interlocal agreement, you know, if the recommendation was made and was agreed to by the three parties to the interlocal agreement of the relocation of the Dog Park to outside of the existing place, then that would be part of the overall scope of the project and the cost of the project for the sportsplex. If that does take place and you vote to do that, fiscal court has approved that as of last night, so that's one of the three parties. You'd be the second one to take official action on that. The, it would be a like-for-like, so similar to what we have now would be to what we put in. That does not preclude you, though, if you so chose to say, well, we've got an opportunity to maybe enhance the Dog Park. If there were enhancements that you chose to make, that would be on the city's responsibility for those costs. But as a like-for-like, that would be borne by the, the, the sports complex project.
Does that, well, I'll, I'll let Jeff talk, and then, then I'll ask some questions.
Okay.
You, you expect me to answer your question? Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, Commissioners. Before you, once again, somebody asked what I was here presenting on tonight, and I had to think for a minute because I'm before you so many times. So, so what I want to present tonight is, is just a cursory overview of four different sites that we've looked at inside Noble Park. As Amy mentioned, January 22nd, we presented a letter to the city commission recommending relocation to, to allow for the, the proper programming of the sports complex within Bluegrass Downs and Stewart-Nelson Park. And so, just want to kind of walk through this with you and, and be happy to entertain questions at the end. So, so this first slide just shows the, the existing Dog Park location roughly with the red, red circle there at Stewart-Nelson Park. The yellow dots in Bob Noble Park are indicating the, the general locations of the areas that we've studied. So just for context, we, and I'll, let me back up just for a second. We met in November with Dog Park stakeholders back, I think, November 18th and 19th. So we have had continued conversations with Dog Park users. We've met with them. I've given at least one of them my cellphone number, and she calls me from time to time, and, and we've developed, you know, a little bit of a bond over this. And so, so we, you know, we, we have not done this in a vacuum. So we're, we're trying to listen to, to the community members and those who use it. Just for context, this, these proposed locations, from Dog Park to a proposed location, is about 1.3 miles further down the road towards downtown. From the intersection of Park Avenue and Stewart-Nelson Park Road to the intersection at Oscar Cross Boys and Girls Club and the ballfields at Noble Park is 0.7 miles further. So I know it's one of the things that, that we heard from the Dog Park users is that this was too far away from where it currently is. And we're, you know, 1.3 miles total distance from where it currently is, just for context. The existing Dog Park is roughly, with the small Dog Park and the large Dog Park, we're roughly 95,000 square feet in area. And so, what you see now on this slide is the shape of the existing Dog Park there in Stewart-Nelson Park. And what I've done, when we're looking at these new sites, I've just taken that existing shape, maybe have rotated it or twisted it a little bit, but just so you can see a like-for-like size in these areas to generally to scale on this map. So the existing site, and I, I don't know how many of you have used the Dog Park. I personally have not. My dog has. My wife has taken my dog, our, our dog, not my dog, although sometimes it is. The amenities out there are two restrooms, and they're portable toilets. There's no permanent restroom facilities at the Dog Park. There's two water sources, one in each of the two-
For the humans.
What's that?
Yeah. Two rest, portable restrooms for the humans.
For humans, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
I tried.
All right. Two shelters, one in each of the Dog Parks, two picnic tables, one in each shelter. There's three benches, three bag stations, three trash cans. There's three vestibule entry systems, and this is important just with, with Dog Parks, to get in from, from the parking lot to an inner kind of vestibule area so that you can get into the Dog Park without dogs escaping with great ease. There is lighting present at the perimeter drive, but there's no lighting directly associated with the Dog Parks themselves. There are 16 trees in proximity, kind of in this general area, with seven trees inside the Dog Parks themselves of varying sizes. Gravel parking is present, and you kind of see that on the, the bottom right of the image there. And then the upper, kind of middle portion at the, the top of the small Dog Park, there's a small parking area there as well for the, for the smaller Dog Park access. So you're looking at approximately 16 vehicles, maybe a few more if you squeeze them in, but there's no defined parking spaces there. So just some things to keep in mind as we're looking at these. We went out and did these surveys last week and, and use this as kind of a metric to, to study the, the, these other sites. So just some pictures of the existing site, each of the Dog Parks, just some, some general pictures there. So slide option one is generally located at the Greenway Trail entrance and next to the skate park behind, there's a, there's a small building and a, and a larger picnic pavilion kind of behind the, the basketball courts there. This was a, an area that was, that was brought up, and so we looked at it. And how I'm going to approach this, just some pros and cons from our perspective. This is our design team perspective, PFGW Architects and Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering, and then some, some input from, from city staff as well. Pros is that there's nearby paved parking with the, the parking at the ballfields and the Greenway Trail. There are already four accessible parking spaces there. There's proximity, proximity to existing utilities. There are existing restrooms nearby associated with the ballfields there. There's multiple trees for shade. That's one of the things we heard from the Dog Park users, is, is that shade would be, would be a big plus. And there's an existing shelter nearby. And what you'll see in some of these pros and cons, some of the same items show up as a pro and a con. And so the, the cons are that this, this site is adjacent to some high-use areas. The basketball courts, which I know are heavily used in the summer and the warmer months, the skate park, ballfields, green- the skate park, ballfields, Greenway Trail entrance. So there's a lot of traffic moving by this area. And if your dog is like my dog, that barks at anything that moves within a two-mile radius of your, of your location, this could be an issue. There are low spots present that need to be regraded. There's an existing shelter nearby, which, you know, is a pro but also a con because the folks that use that shelter, if it's not in the Dog Park, if somebody's having a family reunion or a picnic there, the dogs could be barking incessantly at those folks. And then the tree canopy, while there is good shade there, it can create a debris field from time to time with, you know, the winds like we had Monday. I haven't been out there to view these sites since then, but I'm sure there are limbs down that would be, could become toys for the dogs but trip hazards for folks. So that's site one. Site two is really close by. It's back in the field, kind of the Anna Ballmer area of Noble Park. If you go on past the tennis court or the basketball courts here and proceed back toward this field, this location, one of the pros was that it was the location suggested by the 2020 Parks Master Plan. This is where our team of consultants, we were on that team that was led by Bacon Farmer Workman and then Branstadter Carroll, Parks Planning Consultants, this was their suggested location. And so there was a reason for that. It wasn't just because it was, you know, an afterthought. It was thought through and suggested to be located there. It is a large open area. The area is vastly underutilized. There are existing restrooms nearby. There's a, there's a building back in the back of this area that's underutilized as well. It does have some existing restrooms. It's adjacent to the Greenway Trail, and there's the park building that I mentioned that contains the restrooms. The cons is it's not highly visible. It's kind of tucked back in a corner and you kind of have to know what you're looking for to find it. There are, again, low spots present. There's some debris that's back there now or just some spoils of dirt and gravel have been stored, and so some of that would have to be dealt with. And there are no shelters in the area as well. Slide option three is located just west of Montgomery Lake, kind of across from the Noble Park pool, between the parking lot and the lake. So some of the pros of this site is there's, again, existing paved parking with eight accessible parking spaces already in existence. There are site utilities in the area. There's proximity to existing walking paths and the lake. It is a large open area, and there are great views of the lake. The cons is that this area is pretty heavily utilized in any of the 5K races, any of the running events that take place in Noble Park. This is the staging area. And so that would have to be thought through, you know, from that respect. And just other park events, there are restrooms located across the lake, but nothing in the general vicinity. Those restrooms are over by the playground on the east side of the lake. Again, a con is this proximity to these high-use areas, walking paths, the lake, ducks, geese. I can't imagine that would go well with ducks and geese and dogs. This is one of two large open grass areas in the park. We've only got two that are really large and prominent, and this is one of them, the other one being between the main entrance and the tennis courts, where there's space for ultimate frisbee or football games to go on and all that. And so this would reduce that to one primary, large, unobstructed, open space.
How close is this to the Music Garden?
Is right next door to the Music Garden.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. I meant to put that on here. That was some of the proximity to amenities, but it is adjacent, directly adjacent to the new Music Garden. There is one existing shelter here, I think Shelter 10, up on the north side of the parking lot, and there are very few trees for shade. So, and then slide option four, this one was added late on Friday, but in time. So some of the pros with this site, there's existing paved parking in the area with one accessible space. This is the area, kind of when you make the turn at the tennis courts to go back towards the playground, this is the area to your right before you get to the playground. There's proximity to existing utilities. The area is underutilized, multiple shade trees. There are, you know, larger open spaces for dogs to run and all that as well, so it's not just a wooded area. There are existing shelters nearby and existing restrooms nearby. The restrooms that I referenced in slide option three that were across the lake, these are right next to this, to this area. The cons are the existing shelters, once again, with folks that use those, and that may not mix well with, you know, dogs if they're not Dog Park users using them. The tree canopy, again, the same, same kind of issue with site option one, and there are some low spots present that need to be regraded when it rains in this area, as with other areas in the park. Standing water, you know, happens in those areas, take a little while to drain. So, you know, our recommendation at this point is that we don't have one. We, I think we, we had hoped to have one at this point, but the further we got into reviewing these sites later last week and kind of our final review, we just, we want to, you know, this is too important of an issue to rush into. We want to make the right decision. This is a long-term decision. We delayed on making the recommendation to relocate as long as we could, but it was just inevitable that it needed to take place. And now we want to take the, and do our due diligence in making sure we find the right location for this, this community amenity. And really what we hear is folks that are traveling, that come off the interstate, they're looking for a place for their dogs to run, and this is a great location. So we want this to be an asset for years to come.
So the municipal order that we're going to vote on tonight really is just the relocation. It's not to a spot.
Correct, correct. You can do that. Now, you know, if you're looking for a staff recommendation, we can definitely provide that based on Amy's and I's tonight, if you want that, if you want to take some time as, you know, as Jeff said, to consider it. You know, Amy and I have talked about it. We've talked about the pros and the cons. We've given due consideration, especially for the like-for-like as under the inter-local, and trying to get that. I think from, from our perspective, from staff perspective, one of these does really rise better than the other three. Two of them definitely better than the, than two, but, but we can provide that if you want, if you're ready for that tonight. We can make that recommendation from the staff.
I have a couple of questions. Sure. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I'm happy to listen to the recommendation, but I'm not, you know, I do agree with Jeff. I think it's a really big decision, you know, and, you know, I just, so we can go through that if you, if you like, but I really want to, I don't want to make that decision tonight for sure. So, go ahead.
When you said that you had met with the dog owners and they were concerned about the distance from the current location, I don't understand why. I mean, they drive their dogs there, right?
Right. I think, I think it's more the perception and the accessibility to those who are coming into the community, who may be traveling, you know, through the area on the way to Florida or whatever, who have dogs that use it, or just folks that come in from the community and, you know, one of the things we heard was that everybody knows where this is. And while that is very true, it's been there for a while now, the same would occur with a new location. So some of the, I think there was just some misunderstanding about what the new Dog Park would be, and we've, you know, tried to ensure folks that it's a like-for-like match. It will be no, no worse than what we have, and it will, in all likelihood, be better. I mean, my goodness, the road to get to it is going to be infinitely better because you won't lose your mirrors driving down it when you pass a car. So, so I think it's just some confusion on what a relocated Dog Park is and just the perception of it being in a different location.
People just don't like change.
And they don't like change, that's correct.
You mentioned the like-for-like cost. So how's that calculated?
We would, you know, and I think it's probably more like-for-like amenities. The cost, you know, with, and I, when was the Dog Park constructed?
2011.
Okay, 2011. So, you know, like-for-like costs, we would be looking at a significantly smaller Dog Park because costs have risen since 2011. So this is a like-for-like amenities. So, so, you know, the type of fencing that's out there, the type of vestibule entry systems, the, you know, shelters that are there, we would make sure that wherever this was located, there were at least two shelters, at least two picnic tables. So trying to match the amenities of the current Dog Parks, so.
And where, where on location number four, where the proposed pickleball courts, where are they in relation to?
They are, let me see if I can get the mouse here. Right in this area here, correct?
If you.
Yeah, you can't see that.
If you come, can you see it?
Yeah, there you go.
To the right of the lake.
Sounds like across the road. So this, this option four would actually have a good stand of trees that would separate still the pickleball courts and the, in this proposed location.
I have a couple of questions.
Go.
The, it seems like Noble Park's automatically default for this. I've often wondered, I've used a Dog Park, but the Dog Park is really not centrally located to the city. You know, if you live on certain parts of the city, you got to drive quite a bit to get there. And I often wondered if a Dog Park more centrally located would be better. I know Noble Park kind of gets loved and used to death. There's a lot of traffic going through Noble Park. It's, you know, it's not as peaceful as it used to be because there's cars going through it and all. You add the dogs to the mix, it might be a little, and I don't, to me, the concern about people traveling off the interstate, that is not a concern for me. I really think more of city residents and the benefit to them versus, you know, the taxpayers. But the, so I just, I wondered if we've done a considering other locations or even, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's me. I don't know if other folks feel like, maybe better.
Well, I share that a little bit. I mean, you know, we haven't really looked, I mean, I don't know that there's another place out there. I don't know how hard we've looked, really. But.
We do have the other one at Independence.
Yeah.
I mean, it's much smaller.
It's, yeah, it's tiny with no parking.
Actually, it's not really, I live very close to that one. That one is, it's a mess.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we have anything nearby that would be suitable.
I think it adds a nice amenity to Noble Park myself, if it's in the right place and protects it.
Well, it is ultimately, and under the interlocal agreement, it is this body's decision as to where it locates within the city limits. It does not have to be. Amy and I did talk about some other options at some of our other parks to kind of, to your thing, is there one more centrally located? But we also fell back, you know, that this, this park had been looked at for a Dog Park as part of the master plan, you know, in that in 2020, that there was that planned amenity to be included in this park. It is in close proximity to the, to the point of, yes, people will learn where the new one is located, but the ease of access and other people using the park, you know, on that, we felt that, that that was, you know, where we stood today. And also, in an interest of trying to get something moving forward, that when we take the one out of Nelson Park offline, that we wanted to be able to have as close as possible, if not already had this one open, and that this, this location in the park gave us the best opportunities to meet that goal as well.
I just want to make sure we don't rush.
Yeah, while I agree that, right. I was going to just say the same thing. I mean, while, while I agree, you know, we really don't want to be without a Dog Park, but I don't want to, I'd rather take a little more time to make the right decision, you know, so.
And if I may, you know, we were on the team for the Parks Master Plan, and as part of that Parks Master Plan was a proposed redevelopment of Stewart-Nelson Park. And so the Parks Master Plan did, this was a planned relocation of the existing Dog Park was part of the master plan. It wasn't just a new Dog Park in Noble Park. So, so I think that's, that's probably why we default to this because, you know, why spend money on a master plan.
We've always talked about putting it in Noble Park since we've talked about it.
Yeah, it makes sense, but, you know, the sports, the outdoor sports complex is going to be a big change. I mean, there's going to be a lot more traffic in town. It's going to bring more people in town. There's going to be more dogs. I mean, you know, so I'm, you know, I'm not against Noble Park. I just, I just, I just want to make sure that, that there's not something else out there. I don't know that we looked anywhere else.
I mean, we've talked, we've talked about a couple of potential sites. We have a lot of green space. I don't know that we meet the centrally located, but, but we have kind of brushed the topic of potential sites. And the reality is, in this community, we have eight playgrounds, and so you would think that we would also increase the amount of Dog Parks that we have to serve different neighborhoods and communities. So I think long-term planning, we will definitely see more, but for now, this is just the site that we focused on.
Sure. Got you.
I'd be interested in hearing what your options were in case we have majorly concerns with one of them.
Well, if, you know, the, the two that align closer to the entrance to the Greenway Trail, option one, can you circle back to that one before me, Jeff, please? You know, we looked at that one, but as the cons being really for us, as we talked about it internally, and Amy had just come back from a training session where it was on maintenance, but it got to talking about Dog Parks, and the incompatibility of closer, highly recreational activities like a skate park and ball, basketball courts, really, other communities have seen a lot of negatives of when a Dog Park is located close to those type of high-intensity activities, which, which that one, that one would lend to that. And so in our conversation about it, we didn't feel that that was a high option there for us from the staff standpoint. Option two was the one that was selected previously with that master plan, but as we looked at it, there is some, some, some heavy sloping that comes off of the trail, some washouts. We've seen even more washouts with rain, and we felt like that might even increase the opportunity for additional maintenance that was, might be unnecessary if, you know, if that was located there, we'd have to have some of our high-intensity maintenance to address that or put in some infrastructure on the front side to try to reroute some of that, which then moves that watershed elsewhere into the park. And so that would change some of that natural water flow on that. And so while it is, you know, it was identified there, we didn't, for that one, we didn't think that that was rose to our levels as staff as, as one of the higher priorities. Three, you know, initially, we really, you know, favored this location because of the close proximity to amenities in relationship to parking, and that's one of the things that staff has constantly heard about, that it did have a large open space there, but Commissioner, as you rightfully pointed out, you know, you do have the Sound Garden that's close to it. It has a walkway around it. Yes, it is closer to the lake. I don't, you know, maybe we'll help some of our geese issues by having Dog Park there to keep them a little bit more corralled than wandering over. But, you know, as we talked about that one as well, out of the, out of the options, that one kind of landed from staff's point of view as the second-best option. From our conversation and was, is four, is looking at where four is located, it is separated a little bit from more of the higher-intensity activity. Mayor, to your point about the pickleball courts, we really looked at that as well. There's enough separation there with the tree growth stand and things that, that we didn't feel that the paddles, you know, of the pickleball smacking around and stuff would be such a distraction on that. There is some amenities of parking. There's more parking availability in this location already. We have a couple of small parking lots that, that lead up to it. There are some shelters in that area. It has some open space. It has some tree growth. It has the, you know, water access, that type of thing that we may need to develop on that. And so just from an initial blush, by factoring in all of those considerations, you know, staff was leaning towards four because this is a more of an underutilized area of the park.
I really would encourage us to not consider option three because that is a big open field where you see lots of people playing, and it is so close to the play, the new music playground. To me, when you come into the park, most everything seems to be on the left. I mean, you do have the tennis courts, but there is that big open area. So this would take people into a different area of the park.
I kind of want to draw.
I kinda wanna drive through and see, I, to me, it looks like, and I'm just looking at a map, it's too close to the shelters, that people could be having reunions, or, and, I mean, it's kinda like eating dinner.
There's a lot of noise comes from a dog park.
And I just, you know, if it's real close, I mean, I know I have a six-pound dog, but he can wake somebody up from, you know, a couple of blocks away if he's not happy, so.
And, and we, we, you know, and Amy and I talked, talked about that, you wanna?
Yeah, so I would encourage that for sure, for you guys to drive through, I drove through after our conversation yesterday, there are six shelters in this little loop, but only one of them is large and serves families and birthday parties and things like that, the others are all small, maybe one table, and so they really don't get utilized a whole lot, and so that's another reason why we thought this.
I didn't wanna rush to judgment, my first impression was.
I would absolutely encourage you guys to drive through and see, because this is that, it's like nine acres of wooded, undeveloped, underutilized area, so, I agree, I don't wanna just put it in, I wanna make sure that we, we pick the right spot for the community for long term, so.
You know, and pickleball, let's talk about pickleball, we got some pickleballers here tonight, and, you know, pickleball's growing at, I mean, we've got a decision to make about what to build, you know, and it's gonna be expensive, and, but it's, but the sport is growing, you know, by leaps and bounds, and so, you know, that gives me a little bit of cause for concern, too, so.
And I, and I will say this, just as a reminder, that, you know, the shapes that I have drawn on here for these, these are just very crude, general placements, I think, you know, Darren and I even went back and forth yesterday a little bit, and I moved this one north because of the pickleball location, so, so I think, you know, we can shape these in different ways and get some more buffer space between pickleball and the dog park if this were selected, so.
Again, you're saying 92,000 square feet, is that right?
Uh, 95,204, so, yeah.
Okay, so the vote tonight is really to officially approve the relocation, but not the, but not the location.
Yeah, to approve the recommendation for the Sarts Complex to relocation of the dog park from Stuart Nelson Park.
Okay, any more discussion?
Well, then a municipal order states from Stuart Nelson to Noble Park, so.
And we amend?
So I was gonna ask, that's what I was gonna ask, if later on, could we come back and change this if we did this tonight?
I think it's good, the, I think the county last night in theirs was, because of the recommendation, I believe that they took the action to, to Noble Park based on the previous conversations and the recommendation.
I think we should leave it Noble Park, we've been talking about it, being at Noble Park ever since we've been talking about the sports park, we've had plenty of time when we could've changed the location if we wanted to, and we haven't up to this point, so I think we should look at having more dog parks perhaps throughout the city that would be able to provide more service, but for this one to move from Stuart Nelson Park, it's always been gonna be moving to Noble Park.
Reven, revenues were up, John, you know, stated that, so.
What'd you say?
Reven, revenues are up for the city for this first.
A lot of hands out for that, though.
What would it take to amend it? Is it, can we vote on amending it tonight, or is that something's gotta be?
Then the county would have to come back.
Would they have to come back and amend theirs?
Yep.
So we could vote on Noble Park, and then we could come back and amend it? I'm, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm not really saying, let's do that, I'm curious what the process would be, because the county can't really vote on moving something into our, into one of our parks, I know we wanna do that, you know, if, there needs to be some agreement, but, but that's incorrect to.
Well, I mean, again, the, the ultimate location under the interlocal within that, you know, said that it left it up to, to this body to decide, but the, you know, yes, you could, you could go back and amend, but that would require at least them to go back and do the same, I think that, you know, if you're thinking about that, then, I don't know, you wanna take action tonight at all, because coming back and amending, if you're really thinking about that.
Is there some?
Because, you know, if you're really thinking that that may be an option, that you don't wanna go to Noble Park with this, then I think we need to have a conversation with the county before you take an action on that, and say, look, because that was their basis of that, in the recommendation, because, going back to what Jeff said, the master plan was always in that was to relocate beyond the sportsplex ever coming on, was to relocate out of Stuart Nelson to Noble Park.
The dog park is very popular, and people really enjoy it and appreciate it, I, I guess I'm not really understanding why we wouldn't, why we would care for it, why we, we wouldn't want it to be in Noble Park.
There's a lot, I live by a dog park, and the one at Independence, and there's a lot of noise that comes from the dog park, and I've been to the other dog park, I'm not saying, it's just, if you're a dog owner, it's great, but there's a lot of noise, and I could see a lot of dogs being distracted by activities around, you know, and I could see it also, you know, there's, there's nothing really, unless you're the dog owner, there's nothing really peaceful about having a dog park close to you, I mean, it's, it's just a lot of noise and dogs barking, dogs snarling at each other, so.
So if we're concerned about the noise in Noble Park, why would we even wanna take it somewhere else and put it in somebody else's neighborhood?
Well, I'm just saying you'd have to look and just see if there was another spot, I'm, I'm not saying move it, I'm just saying, have we looked at other options?
Well, Independence, that one wasn't originally a dog park, I think we just made it one because we needed it, because there were so many requests for an additional dog park, it originally wasn't one.
Yeah, it, well, it doesn't matter, it's a dog park.
Yeah.
It wasn't a dog park until people made it a dog park.
Yeah, exactly.
We supported that.
But the city supported it, and it's a dog park now.
Yeah.
I think I would tend to agree with Commissioner Wilson, since we've been talking about Noble Park since the beginning, why wouldn't we just keep it there and go with that and, and look for other places that we would find could put a dog park, of course, I can't imagine.
You mean another dog park?
Another dog park, yes.
A second dog park.
I mean, Jeff, is it possible to move it a little bit further away from the bigger part, I mean, the bigger pavilion, a little bit further away from where we have pickleball, where we're planning for the courts, just to get it, just to get some more distance between that?
Yes, ma'am, there, it is, I, I think, when, when you start to move it further east in the park toward H.C. Mathis, you're, you're getting further away from some of the amenities, parking and, and some of those things, but, yes, it can certainly, and again, this is just a general area, but yeah, we can, if this is, if, if the favorite is site option four, and that is sort of what I'm hearing, we can do some further studies on this and, and see, you know, if there's.
Well, I'd like to go back to, to, to option two, you know, I mean, I, I understand that, I mean, that's where the original design was to be located, and then I, I guess we've got these drainage problems down there, what would be the cost? I mean, I'm curious about the cost to, to mitigate some of those, and.
That, I, I don't know off the top of my head, and, and I will say, with, with the Parks Master Plan, that, you know, those types of things weren't taken into account, just like when they, when the conceptual design for Stuart Nelson Park was presented in the master plan, you know, jurisdictional streams, and, and some of that was not taken into account in those layouts either, so while it was the recommendation of the Parks Master Plan to locate it there, some of those, the, some of the minutia of that site may not have been studied in depth, so, but, but as far as the cost, we could get that if we need to.
Yeah, and the other thing that we looked at was the amenities, that you would, you would not be having the, the amenities there that you have at Stuart Nelson with the parking and stuff like, you would have to build that in.
David?
I just said, I liked two, just because it got it out, because I.
Yeah, it's secluded.
I, I respect Commissioner Smith, that it just, nobody wants to be around a barking dog unless it's yours, you know?
And sometimes not even them.
Yeah. That's when it's hers, huh?
I do love my dog, I do love it.
I'm fine with reconsidering option two as well, I, I tend to like four better, but two seems, I, I get being secluded, but it also makes it secluded away from everything else, so I think you have to decide how secluded do you want it to be?
Well, and as far as, as far as the amenities go, I mean, you know, investing in a dog park, you know, investing in some amenities is not a bad investment, I mean, based upon the popularity of dogs today, I mean, dogs, I mean, this was built in 2010, that was 13 years ago, I mean, you know, popularity of, of dogs has tripled or quadrupled since 2010, so, you know, I mean, I'm not concerned about putting more money in a dog park than what we've got in, got now, I mean, I know.
I think it was in for Mayor Kaler. Yes, so, and she was, came mayor in 2013, so it's a little bit later.
Oh, I thought you said 2010.
I said I thought 11, but I wasn't sure.
Oh, okay.
I think it was in for them. But, I mean, at Stuart Nelson, you have porta joms, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So at option two, you're probably gonna have to have porta joms put up there.
At, at least initially, yeah, and that, that's all the interlocal agreement is.
And none of them are gonna have any lighting, unless we add lighting, correct?
Right, right. There, there will be, some of these, there is some, some lighting in proximity with the, some of the parking lots, and then some of that, there, there is some lighting adjacent, but nothing directly at the, the dog parks themselves.
So you wanna narrow it down to more study on two and four?
Well, either that, or we put off voting on the whole thing for, you know, for two weeks, you know, and, you know, and really try to vet this issue of, is there another location outside of Noble, I'm not against Noble Park at all, you know, I just wanna make sure that, you know, given everything that's going on, that we've, you know, that we consider the, all the options, and I, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I mean, maybe, does it have to be in the city? I mean, could it be in the county, I, I mean, could it be closer to the interstate?
Under the interlocal, it was to, to stay within the city, that was the, the things, but, I mean, you can always have a conversation, amend the interlocal, I guess, if you.
Right.
If the county, if the county counterparts were, but you'd have to go farther out.
I'd like to see it stay in the city, it's a city, something that we offer to the city residents.
I agree with that.
I mean, we took a lot of pride when we built it in, whenever, I think around 2013, to provide that, it's been very popular, I, I feel like we should keep it in the city, and we've been talking about Noble Park ever since we've been talking about the whole sportsplex, so.
Okay.
But I would think it'd be worth the phone call, talk to the county, see if, see if they would be up for something that'd be, right now, we've got one in the city, which is really kinda on the edge of the city, the edge of the city limits, is not centrally located, so, but there are a lot of, a whole lot of county people use it, but they're driving in from great distances, so, I, I mean, the county might have an interest in something more centrally located, but maybe not. I'm just, I guess I'm throwing out a lot of questions.
I tend to think that since, you know, since we've been shooting for Noble Park, that we should probably go on and move toward Noble Park and evaluate these four, these four locations, so.
What do you think, should we just maybe focus more time on the two?
Well, we, it's not in the, you know, it's not in the municipal order, so, but yes, I do agree that we should focus on the two, so, so I'll, I'll go ahead and ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Thanks, everybody, for that discussion, I think it was a good discussion, and I think it's an important decision, so.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, we have an ordinance to adopt tonight, it was read two weeks ago, and so I'll let the city clerk please read it again.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the County of McCracken, Kentucky for Establishment of a City-County Comprehensive Plan." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the County of McCracken, Kentucky for comprehensive plan preparation services from Kendig Keast Collaborative. Said consulting work shall be in a contract amount of $150,000 with the City of Paducah and the County of McCracken, each paying 50% of the cost. This expenditure shall be charged to project account MR0087."
So moved.
Second.
So did you all discuss this a couple of weeks ago, and so everybody's pretty clear? Okay, if there's no need for further discussion, I'll ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
We have two ordinances to introduce, the first one is a consensual annexation, and I'll ask the city clerk to read that one.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Extending the Boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky by Annexing Certain Property Lying Adjacent to the Corporate Limits of the City of Paducah and Defining Accurately the Boundary of Said Property to Be Included Within the Said Corporate Limits." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "The City of Paducah hereby approves the consensual annexation of certain tracts of property contiguous to the present city limits located at 2631 Holt Road containing approximately 3.71 acres of land."
So moved, and a second.
Josh, tell us about it.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, tonight we have a consensual annexation for 3.71 acres, it's at 2631 Holt Road, which is directly below Strawberry Hills Pharmacy, in between Holt Road and New Holt Road, and the petitioner's not exactly sure what he would like to do yet, as it's vacant now, but he does anticipate commercial, and his request to the Planning Commission will be, to be a commercial use, so we plan on taking that to him or to the Planning Commission in two weeks. I'd be glad to answer any questions if I have.
I think we had a map, we're just trying to.
We've been working on this one before.
We do.
Yeah, and there at the bottom, Josh, you might be able to hit it on the, you see it on the bottom?
It's on the bottom.
Icon there.
Okay, here we go.
There you go.
There we are.
Yeah.
It's that area outlined in yellow, the red is the existing city limits, so this will extend our city limits south to the adjoining property, which is multifamily at this time, and also to the east and west between a commercial business and some single-family homes.
Any discussion?
Been wanting this one.
Okay, we'll move to.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh, appreciate it. Uh, we'll next, we'll move to the next ordinance that's introduced, and it's on a franchise agreement, so, city clerk?
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Granting a Non-Exclusive Franchise for a Term of Ten Years for a Telecommunications System Within the Confines of the City of Paducah, Kentucky to Open Fibers Kentucky Company LLC DBA Exellicom pursuant to the Terms and Provisions of Chapter 108 Telecommunications of the Code of Ordinances and Approving and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Franchise Agreement with Open Fiber Kentucky Company and all other documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, "This ordinance formally accepts the bid of Exellicom for a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise within the City of Paducah, said bid being in substantial compliance with bid specifications and is contained in the bid of Exeleron, Exellicom of November 11, 2022. Further, this ordinance grants a ten-year non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Open Fiber Kentucky Company LLC DBA Exellicom pursuant to Chapter 108 Telecommunications of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah."
So moved, second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and City Clerk, this is the second telecommunications franchise agreement we're bringing forward to you since the ordinance was updated in August, as a reminder, this fall, we issued an RFP, and Open Fiber did submit a response, we did find its initial application was only partially responsive, so given that it's a non-exclusive franchise, we did allow. So, given that it's a non-exclusive franchise, we did allow them to submit an addendum to come into compliance with the application. They have done that. We have a staff working group and council that's helping us review the applications. So, we are recommending that the Board of Commissioners grants the ten-year non-exclusive franchise agreement with Open Fiber Kentucky. It'll take two readings. And after the franchise agreement, they'll begin the permitting process with the engineering department.
Who is Open Fiber?
They're a telecommunications company. They're actually based in, I think, the Louisville area.
Do we know anything about where, I mean, where they've, where else they operate, or anything about them?
Go ahead, yeah.
They do. They are one of the major telecommunications providers across the state. They have been more centrally located within the Commonwealth. But, they, they're like the other ones that, I think, I forget where all they have, their telecommunications franchise agreements now, but the Louisville area is one of the primary ones.
Were they asked to come? I mean, were they, did they ever think about coming and telling us about them, or?
Oh, yeah. We told them it would be on tonight's commission meeting. Yes, we did let them know that it was on here, and they're welcome to attend. But, I don't believe we have any representatives from them.
Yeah, I think I'd like to know a little bit more about them. I mean, somehow, I mean, just before we vote on it, I mean, you know, it just, I mean, I just think it's due diligence. I mean, they may be big, and I'd like to know more about who they are. And I think they, you know, if we're gonna grant them a franchise agreement, I really think they should be here. So...
Yes.
But...
You could have them come, you could have, you've got this as a first reading. It does take two, so, before you took the second reading.
Yeah. And they are required as a part of the ordinance to have a local representative, and so they have identified that person. So, you know, that is something that we require.
I just think it's good business for us to, you know, see who they are, hear about who they are, who's gonna operate in the city if we're gonna grant them a ten-year franchise agreement.
Absolutely.
They'll be digging in the, burrowing in the ground and running lines, that sort of thing.
Any franchise agreement that's, that would be awarded is that. But, the, that's why they're also, the ordinance was written where they have to provide a performance bond, they have to provide a security bond, an application fee, and then the remittance on that.
And they still go through all the right-of-way permitting with engineering. So, this is basically just saying that they've met the requirements of our application, so that they can actually start their permitting with engineering.
We, before you, before you took office, we went through quite an extensive evaluation of the telecommunications ordinance. And, you know, we had a first reading, and there were several people that didn't like it, so we went back. And so, there was a lot that went into it.
I remember watching quite a bit.
Yeah.
You watched a commission meeting?
You guys did a great job on that.
And the companies had an opportunity to provide feedback, and I think Open Fiber was one that we sent it to, to review, because they had expressed interest in operating in Paducah. So, we've been working with them for...
Okay, maybe ask them to come back?
Absolutely.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to discussion. And we have a discussion about pickleball. We have a couple of pickleball folks here. We'll have the discussion first, and then let you guys get up and have your say.
Mayor, Board of Commissioners, if you recall, you did authorize us to RFP for a pickleball court's design was an eight-court setup with all the amenities, fencing, you know, shelter, lighting was part of that. We put the RFP out. We had pre-bid conference mandatory. We had three providers that, or contractors that showed up for the pre-bid. The, we only had one that submitted a bid ultimately. We had the option, the primary option of being a tensile strength concrete, which is, when we talked to the United States Pickleball Association, they actually have a construction manual that is the surface of choice. It has a little bit longer longevity than an asphalt, and it actually has some sponging. It's kind of a floating, if you will, to it. So, it was the recommended. We gave the option for an asphalt bid as part of it. The loan company that made the submission did not, does not do asphalt. They just do the concrete. And so, that's the only portion that they bid. All in, the bid was way beyond what we had budgeted and anticipated. It was close to, when you consider the lighting aspect of it and the electrical, it was close to $800,000. We had anticipated somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $75,000 with construction costs going up per court. And as, you know, 800, eight courts, easy math, you know, it's about $100,000 a court is the way it came in. So, we wanted to bring that information for you tonight. There are some options for you to consider how we proceed. We can reject that bid and go back out to the RFP process, if that is your choice. We, we can, you can authorize us to have some contractual negotiations to see if there may be some cost savings with the loan vendor, if you want to do that. Or, we can redesign the eight court down to something a lot smaller and go back to another RFP process as well. So, Amy, was there anything that you wanted to?
No, I was, I did get it.
Make sure that I covered everything on that. So, that's, that's where we are as we sit tonight. You know, the, the options of going back to RFP-ing it, you know, with, to see if we might have some, some companies. We did learn after the fact, there was an asphalt company, or a company that does asphalt courts, that just the timing of their staffing and everything, it just, even though we, they met the pre-bid conference, they just could not getting in the time for, for the application. So, they didn't, my understanding, they didn't feel that they could put together a competitive application, so they chose not to submit at that time.
How long did they have?
We began conversations, and then the RFP was out for 20 days, is that right?
I think it was 14.
14 days? Okay. It was within the seven to 21 day, but we did have all the conversations on the front side and the, the wear of it, and the pre-bid conference. And so, they had opportunity there on that.
So, we anticipated $50,000?
Potentially.
He said 50 to 75.
50 to 75, based on, per court, all in. That was kind of, you know, working with the consultants on that. And when we started looking at construction costs and going up, that we anticipated initially, when we started having the conversations and looking to what was going on around us in other communities. And, I know, Amy's done some, some research on, on what other communities done. But, what we found was that, you know, the other communities around us were pretty much resurfacing courts, tennis courts, or basketball courts to become pickleball courts. And so, it wasn't a like-for-like comparison on the cost on that. So, so we were aware of that. We even looked at, you know, the opportunity of what maybe, could we do some of the stuff in-house to prepare the area? That's not gonna be a major cost savings for that, for the aspect is what we determined. I don't know. Amy, was there anything else that you found in your research?
No, that's pretty accurate. We're good. No, the, there was some that were built, I think it was Calvert City, I think it was Calvert City, built some. However, a lot of their services were in-kind, and they were able to do a lot of it in-house. And so, their project costs were way less than what we were looking at. And I haven't found anyone locally or in this area that have put in the post-tension concrete. And that's really where most of our expense is, in the RFP. So, a lot of the other courts are asphalt, which is just a lot cheaper. So...
If we were thinking it was gonna be 50 to 75,000 per car, per court, so if it was 75, it would have been around 600,000. Now, it's about 100,000 per court, so it's about $200,000 more than what we had anticipated.
Estimated, yeah. And that 800 is with the electrical and the lighting.
And the lighting.
Yeah.
And the asphalt, no, the concrete.
Concrete, yeah.
Which, I'm told, does hold up more.
It does. It has a lot, I think they said 30 to 35 years before we have to do anything with it.
So, it does have a better long-term life.
These would be the best pickleball courts in the area, in anywhere around here.
Is that a bad thing or a good thing?
No, no.
I'm just, I'm trying to read the tea leaves.
I had this conversation with Rick probably two or three months ago, and I see he's gone. But, he just said, because I know the county built some out in Heath area, and they didn't have near this in it, but they just took some asphalt and painted lines and, you know, they got a lot less. So, no, this is, you know, if they're gonna have tournaments and stuff, they would be here, and I think people would be standing in line to play these. I'm not saying, I mean, that's, that's a big mountain to climb. I mean, that's, but, just it's not apples and apples is what the...
Right, right, exactly. And, you know, the, and we looked at, like I said, I referenced the construction manual, you know, when we put this together, we looked at the United States Pickleball Association's construction manual, and way courts are, and the recommendations on that. And also, the reason that we looked at eight courts was for the opportunity for there to be some tournaments, and also for, that there, you know, to, a four-court just was gonna be just the locals being able to...
In your professional opinion, do you think we can, going back out to bid, do you have any kind of gut feel on, on whether or not we can drive the cost down any?
The, as Amy mentioned, the major cost savings is if you decided that you wanted to go with an asphalt court system.
But, we got no bids on the asphalt system.
And I have, just in bidding, I've bid stuff my whole life. I hate having just one bid.
Yeah.
You know, that's just, you don't know.
I think that's a good point.
But, how long do you think it will delay it? Have to put it, I mean, why do we think, if we only had one bid now, if we put it out for bid, we would get more?
I agree. I'm not, I'm just...
I mean, I hate having one too, but we've already gone through the bidding process, and we only got one. So, if we put it back out for bid, A, it's gonna delay it a lot more, but B, I don't know why we think we would get more.
It could be timing, you know, if the vendors are able to...
It's all about timing, whether or not these companies, when they get busy, and...
Yeah. They got six or seven months to work, and...
You know, in our, in our area, and the reason that you, that you haven't seen a lot of the, of the tensile strength concrete courts is, is that there's not a lot in our area of providers of that type. You know, of course, pickleball boom has picked up and it's exploded, and, you know, people that, that are building them, or getting them built, you know, were traditionally asphalt. So, those were the folks that were familiar with building tennis courts and that type of thing.
How, how fast can you get another bid out?
We would have to, I mean, we, if we're not changing any of the major specs, it's just re-advertising it and then running it, you know, putting it in the paper and following the seven to 21-day prescribed period.
So, is the question whether or not we wanna have asphalt or concrete?
I, I think that if you want to, yes, if you go back and rebid it, we would still, we would have both options to be bid. But...
But, we bid on both of those already, right?
We gave the option for that, yes, for, for those to be...
And we got no asphalt bid.
And we got no asphalt bids.
Yeah, the company that submitted the bid specializes in the post-tension, so they did not include an asphalt as part of their project.
What if you bid it, I don't know anything about construction. What if you bid it with just regular concrete versus the high tensile concrete?
What would be the closest, I'm kinda curious, closest courts like this? Nashville be the closest place they would have these courts, or, or closer than that? I don't know.
I think there's, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly where in our geographic location, which would actually be from a mileage closest. I do know that some of the, the ones that, early on, that were getting sent to us as we were talking about that, there were some down in Georgia, there were some in Tennessee, there were some, I just, but I don't know if Nashville...
Not next door to Mayfield.
Right.
But, the company's bidding had the option to do that, to bid the regular concrete or to bid asphalt. Could we go back to the company that bid this one and ask them on regular concrete? Is that what you're wanting to go back from that?
Well, they did do it.
Yeah.
They only do this.
Well, they specialize in that. But, the thing about this is the tensile strength concrete is that the, the way, the difference between a regular concrete is that the floating, that type of thing. And so, you're gonna have, if you're thinking about just going regular concrete, I think you need to look at asphalt instead.
Instead, okay. So, you're saying if we put it out for bidding again, it would be, you'd have to get it ready, but that's gonna take a week, probably?
Yeah.
And then you would have to bid it for three weeks, so it'd be...
We'd have to, no less than seven days, no more than 21.
So, you'd be holding it up for at least a month. So, that's...
That's not that bad. I mean, I mean, it's, it's holding it up. But, I mean, I think in order to make a prudent decision, I mean, you know how I think.
I do.
And, and I think that, you know, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Gess. I mean, one, one bid is, is, it's, you know, it's, it's a warning sign. I mean, you need multiple bids. And I think we need to go back out, and I think we need to, you know, we need to contact people. We need to work hard to try to get people to bid, and make sure that they know that we're serious about this, and we're ready to move, and, and try to keep the timeline in as short as we can. But, I think we need, I personally think we need, we should rebid it.
Okay.
You want your comments?
So, so your comments, you want?
So, yes, this is very timely.
Be as quick as possible. Evening, Mayor.
Good evening, and welcome.
Commissioners, city clerk, thank you for listening to us.
May I just ask you to state your name and address?
Christine Overly with West Kentucky Pickleball Club.
And your address for the record, please.
Mike.
Here's your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My address is 1221 Hausman Road, Boz, Kentucky. I live out in the county. I've worked in the city 32 years, so I've been paying payroll taxes for this many years.
Thank you for that.
And I'm Mike Rogers. I'm the president of the West Kentucky Pickleball Club. My address is 54 Barrington Circle. Just to let you know, this will be a very good thing. I think you've heard that before. But, just a couple of weeks ago, we had 200 people, adults, come into town for a tournament. We don't even have courts, so that tells you, from six different states. And we probably could have had 400 or 500, and I would expect that more next year on follow-up events. So, I think it's gonna bring a lot to the city. You're right, places like Louisville and Nashville are doing things like this, but as small as Beaver Dam, Beaver Dam has a nice facility there that they just built in the last year. So, and I thought, man, Beaver Dam, so. But anyways, we appreciate what you're doing for this. It's, it's a great thing. Our organization's only six months old, and we have 130 members here in the Paducah area. So, there's a lot of interest, and there's probably twice that many people playing here. I don't know if you've ever noticed that. But, in pretty much makeshift courts, you have to set it up and take it down and do all this stuff. So, we really appreciate the city doing that. But, I also think it'll give back to the city too in the, in the long term. So, won't tie up any more of your time, but we appreciate it.
I do have just a couple...
Sure.
Questions that people do ask all the time in the pickleball community. They want to know why we're not utilizing West Kentucky Community College as a possible venue. And they also have asked about where the dome was and all that concrete where the first pickleball tournament was held here in Paducah. The concrete's already there and would only have to be marked, and we'd lose out on it during quilter time, per se, what, twice a year, that that is utilized, that space of concrete, which is huge, it's immense, and you could fit a lot of pickleball courts there, and possibly just have restrooms or, you know, lighting. I don't know if, if there's, it's pretty lit down there. But, we do get those questions a lot, like, why aren't we utilizing places that are already surfaced, and all I have to do is resurface them. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
I don't know how complicated that would be with the community college. But, we've played there for years, you know, just makeshift courts and things. And those tennis courts, they're in really bad shape. But, as you found with expense, you're not starting over. So, I don't know if that's a possibility either. But, that might be something you wanna think about. And maybe it already has too. But, the, the downtown, the dome area thing, that was kinda brought to our attention, because this time of year, they're always trying to look for places indoors, and it was re-brought up that years ago, they played a pickleball tournament down there. And I kinda was like, well, that slab just sits there year-round. So, I don't know. That's a bunch of concrete. So, just a food for thought there.
Thank y'all very much for listening.
Thank you all.
We have done it. I don't know why we're, we haven't, Amy may be able to answer that more. We have done it at, at where you're talking about, where the dome is.
Right.
Yeah.
But, I don't know that we've ever had a conversation with West Kentucky that I'm aware of.
No, I mean, of course, that's WKCTC's property. I don't, I doubt that we could, I mean, we couldn't put our money on their property, I would guess, unless, I mean, there has to be some kind of agreement between us and them. So, we could look into it and talk to them.
Thanks for those suggestions. We appreciate it very much. Thanks, thanks for being here.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, we, we don't program the dome space. That was a partnership with a convention center. They had the dome up in preparation, or I think, I think it was in preparation for the Fall Court Show, and so we just utilized the space. They're not wrong. I think we could get 14 courts down there in that space. But, as you know, that, that dome, it can only be up temporarily. So, it would not be...
It can only be up six months.
Yeah. Yeah. It would not be a long-term solution, but...
They can certainly play without the dome, correct?
I'm sorry?
They can play without the dome.
Play without the dome, in good weather.
Yeah, we could, we could play without the dome.
Yep, yep, they could. They could.
Did we give that over, though? Did we give that over though? That property now belongs as part of the convention center, it's no longer controlled by the city, so that's, that's one issue for the city.
Right.
But, actually, that's a good point, but that's a city-county entity, and frankly, the comments I've gotten, I know one person that's interested in pickleball that's a city resident, most of the comments I've gotten are not from city residents, so that might be a good way, a good utilization for the city-county facility to offer pickleball to, and that would certainly be quick.
I do know that they play in the convention center or in the expo center pretty regularly as well, so they've started a pickleball program at the expo.
So there's a history, but I assume you guys have to pay for that indoor use.
We pay five dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Per individual.
Right.
Yeah, there's nothing preventing the convention center from, from using that space as pickleball if they so choose.
I guess we could, we could pass that along to the convention center, asking them about the dome property. I mean, we did work out that agreement with them to have that, so we should encourage them to see.
They're interested in sports tourism, so I think they might be interested, but, but they also have to, you know, be remunerated, so you have to, you know, we have to work through that, so. Thanks, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, back to the other at hand. I, I hate to see it delayed, but I also know that you all are not happy with one bid and really want to put it back out for bid. If we could try to do that within like a month's timeframe, have that set as a goal to not extend below, beyond that?
Yeah, I mean.
I hate to hold it up, but I, I know you all want to try to do another bid.
If, you know, without a substantial rewrite of that is just re-advertising it, and the only, you know, the, some clerical, just changing the dates and stuff on it.
Is that what you, you want to do?
That's what I'd prefer to do.
I have a tentative schedule for a rebid to go out March 7th, so we'd be able to get it out as, as quickly as next week, and then we're looking at 14 days minimum is what I'll try to, try to do, but we could go longer.
Don't cut the days down. I mean, make sure you, you bid it with enough days to make sure that we, we throw the net out.
Sure.
That's all. I mean, I don't want to say how long it should be, just make sure that we get everybody that we think could be interested to know that we've got a bid out there.
Yeah, we, we do have a 21, under the Commonwealth, you know, law, we would have 21-day max for the RFP to be out.
So if you get it out on the 7th, then, I mean, that's.
28?
Three weeks to the 28th till our next meeting, so hopefully.
Yeah, they wouldn't be.
I'm sorry, I'd have to delay it. I don't want to, but I, I feel like that's probably where we're going, heading.
Yeah, we could probably bring it to the 11th meeting. I think it's 11th in April. That should give us enough time to review the bids and that kind of thing, so.
Just curious, do these bids, do they go through the AGC, that type thing? Do you use the AGC?
I don't know that. I know that BFW handled the bid for us, the bid process, and so it gets sent out to anybody that's interested in that bid packet.
I imagine they would, they do, but.
Yeah, they've got a preferred bidder in contact with us. And then we also made the United States Pickleball Association aware that the former president was highly aware that this was going out.
Well, still, we got one bid.
But, but again, and it's based on, you know, the, the area and the time.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
The next discussion item is energy project assessment districts.
Yeah, so Mayor, Board of Commissioners, you know, you have a four-page, just an information packet. EPads as the Energy Project Assessment Districts. Commonwealth of Kentucky passed a law a couple of years ago that does allow for assessment districts to come in that are tied to energy efficiencies. It does allow for public-private partnerships to affect energy efficiency upgrades with onsite renewable energy systems or water conservation measures. The basis of the project or the product of an assessment district is it is a voluntary assessment on the property tax bill. So somebody would have a project, they would say, hey, I want to sign up for it. It's not mandatory if an assessment district is in place, it's up to a project to apply for it. There is no, no financial obligation for the city except to manage the assessment districts, to collect the taxes. The state law does allow for, you know, 1% of the assessment to be retained for an administrative fee, or the city could contract with a third party. The county actually passed an assessment district like this last year, but it was for the unincorporated areas and did not include the city. So if this is something you would like for us to bring at a future meeting for consideration, I just wanted to kind of give you some additional information about it for consideration. And the assessment, again, it's voluntary. What they do though, it's a fixed payment that they work with a lending agency, and it's over the useful life of the improvement, so it allows for energy efficiency. So we'll take, for example, the Wayland Group, building a new hotel, and they want to get some, some lending for energy efficiencies. It allows them to spread out the payback on that over longer for the livelihood of that, of that energy efficiency aspect of that. There is no subsidy or incentive required by the local government that puts it in place if you, you know, if it is then, again, completely voluntary. There is, it is for any and all real property except residential, that is for units or less, and so anything of a residential nature, state law that's four units or less does not allow them to avail themselves of the opportunity. We have had some interest, Wayland Group being one that's expressed that, had some inquiry by Paducah Bank also. You know, hospitals in, since 2015 across the Commonwealth have been big users of this, this option and taking that.
Are there other communities that have successfully?
Some, there's Louisville is one, there's several in Northern Kentucky. The ones in Northern Kentucky actually did it as a county as a whole. They didn't have a city and a county, but when it was initially adopted by the county, it incorporated the whole city. It just really wasn't, there wasn't a lot of action or activity in the western part of the state up until recently as they've come online for that, so I think that's when this county got the request to consider it. It was just a kind of a one-off project for them, and so that's why they adopted their ordinances, I understand it, just without, just in the county, to, to avail that project that they had.
But we're in the county.
Right, but it said specifically, their ordinance that they passed is in the unincorporated areas of McCracken County.
So we have to pass it on our own?
We would have, there's two ways. We pass it on our own or go back in the same timeframe, if they would be willing, this county could go back and readopt or rewrite theirs to include the city, but your timing on that is going to be the same regardless than whether or not they would want to manage, take on the responsibility of the administration for a city or not on that, so.
Could you, this is, I'm really unclear on this.
Yeah, I am too.
Could you explain an example, like you said, a Wayland, for instance, or XYZ company wants to participate in this? Can you talk about the mechanics of the 1% and just kind of like, if I wanted to do that and I had a business, explain to me how that would work?
So if, we'll use the, so the new hotel that's going in, and they wanted to do an onsite renewable energy system, and they wanted to finance that.
Say, solar panels.
Yeah, solar panels, and say the cost of that was $100,000 just to use, and so then they would go to a local provider, lender, provide it, that would get a loan for the $100,000, and so the livelihood of that renewable energy, so the solar panel says 20 years, then they could spread out the payments over 20 years, and it also doesn't go against their other lending or loaning capabilities for them to get other, other, other aspects.
So they may not have the collateral.
Right, and it doesn't tie up that other because it is under this, it, it spreads it out for longer, they pay it back over the livelihood of, of that, they pay it in to the local government or whoever the local government sets it up as the administrator of it, and then that is remitted back to the lending entity. The 1%, the state law allows for the administration of it to retain 1% if it's the, if it's the local government that's doing it, the administration of it, for, for the collection, the remittance and all that.
So we tack that on the revenue stream that we get, and then we remit it back to the bank or whoever the loan agency.
Yeah, it'd be a voluntary assessment on the tax bill, so when tax bills went out, we would know what the, the assessment was for that year, and it would be put on their bill to remit back, plus you could charge the 1% for that, that collection, the administration, so remit it back then to the lender.
So the assessment is determined by, say, if it's 20-year life of it and it costs $20,000, then we would get $1,000 a year revenue off of it, keep 1% and then pay that to the.
Lender.
Lender.
And it allows the, the agency or the business to defer the cost of, of doing that energy efficiency or renewable energy.
Kind of like an energy savings contract.
Yes.
It seems kind of awkward and busy for.
I guess I'm, I'm, you know, I would never want to turn down something, you know, new or innovative, you know, but I wonder, I'm curious as to what other communities have said, you know, hey, this has been a big boom, you know, this has been great, nah, it's not really worth it. I mean, I'd like to get some feedback.
So when I, because I have talked to on our list serve, our Kentucky City-County Managers list serve, and that's how I had understood that some counties had adopted, you know, widely adopted it. There is actually a, a company in Kentucky that is, is doing the administration for several communities across state and counties, across the state. Those that have availed themselves initially were in the major metropolitan areas where there was a lot of activity going on. None of our counterparts in our KC-CMA that I've talked to that have, that are participating in this, whether it was the county or not, have had anything negative to say about it, especially since it was looked as an economic development tool, it was a voluntary assessment, so there was no mandatory. The, the only negative, if you would, is that the administration time, if you do it in-house, there is some administration time.
We really have nothing to lose, right, right? Signing on, we just have the opportunity to participate.
Administration time.
Gain from it.
Administration time or.
If we choose to participate.
Yeah, well, the administration time, or you could take that and say to the company, if you, you could, you would designate a company, and you could put it out for our queues to who the company might be, to be the administrator of the program, they would do all the collection, they would do all the.
Have you talked with Bruce Wilcox about it? Is he familiar with it or?
And briefly in passing, but not in a lot of detail. It's not one that, and actually, of recent, that's reached out to us, was, the first one reached out to us was Wayland Company.
I'm, I'm not against it. I mean, is, is it a, is it a deal breaker for Wayland? I mean, it is something there, I mean, is it?
I don't know if it's a deal breaker, but it's, they're, they're highly interested in, in having that opportunity.
What, what would be the negative? What concerns you about it?
Just, well, we'd implement something for one company and it would be administrative time and nobody else would avail themselves, and we look up five years from now and nobody's using it.
But it doesn't cost us anything if no one's using it?
I see it as a, I mean, I got to learn more about it, but I see it as a distraction away from what we do, which is provide services for, you know, for residents and taxpayers. It's just kind of out of our wheelhouse in a way.
Well.
And maybe more economically.
General assembly, I mean, it has to come through this body to enact the district.
Yeah.
But the actual management, you can contract out, you know, with a company to do all of the, the legwork on it. I, I just wanted, before we spent a lot of staff time moving forward, I wanted to get a sense if it's just something you want us to continue to explore. There is an interest, you know, already expressed by, by Wayland and Paducah Bank has, has reached out to see if we were moving forward.
Yeah, let's, let's learn more. I mean, you know, there's no downside to learn more.
I kind of see how it works, but I'd like some more info on it.
Okay.
I've got, I've got my questions for Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be right with you.
Sounds good. Well, we will continue to provide you input on that.
Okay, thank you, Darren. The next item for discussion is the 2020, 2022 Commission Priorities Annual Update. We've got a couple of people that we're going to let speak when you get finished.
Sure.
Because they're involved in the, in the priorities.
Oh, great. I will kick this off, but then in a few minutes, I'll turn it over to the city manager to finish up the presentation and then I'll come back in. So, so we recently have wrapped up calendar year 2022 and the commission priorities. This report will focus on key accomplishments and further opportunities. We did talk about these on Friday with our leadership team, but we wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to also show this to the public in preparation for the upcoming commission priority setting on March 10th. So as a reminder, we have 10 commission priorities and three continuous improvement items. These are our commission priority stages. We're in the assessment stage now. We're getting ready to start again with that board of commissioners retreat, priority adoption, and then we get into implementation, communication and reporting. This is a really important tool that we use for budgeting and communicating and working with the team on what the commission priorities are. We also communicate out to the public through regular reporting what the priorities are and what progress we've made. So we're getting ready to start this over. Tonight, we'll really be talking about also the latest updates. This is highlighted in the report, which is available online at padukaky.gov/commissionpriorities. So with that, we'll get started. With 911, I joked on Friday that these are two small bullets for pretty large accomplishments. We did issue the joint RFP, it's actually out right now, and responses are due on Thursday. The Joint City-County Committee met 18 times, it's achieved its goals of talking about revenue, governance and what specs would be in the RFP, and we have disbanded that committee and now we're working towards a working group that will review the RFP and continue working towards revenue and governance discussions. Can we keep going? Okay, great. With beautification, we really wanted to highlight the Tyler 311 app. This is the first full year it's been in service. We had over 700 downloads and over 1,000 service requests through both the mobile app and the web portal. The top service request is brush pickup, and Customer Experience Director and City Clerk Lindsay Parrish talked about one goal is really going to be communicating out that this service is available and trying to increase use through the app and the portal. We also really spent beautification working with our boards and committees, particularly the Creative and Cultural Council and the Civic Beautification Board. The Creative and Cultural Council recently held a retreat to set their own goals as a board. One of their top priorities that they'll be looking at in 2023 is a large public art project. The Civic Beautification Board, they're focusing on participating in an April Earth Day event, updating the Dogwood Trail signs and banners, and then focusing on the Welcome Paducah signs. We talked a lot about how there's a lot of further opportunity around beautification, both working with the boards and then also partnering with our team members.
Yeah, I'll just make this comment. I mean, I'm not going to weigh in, I may weigh in on a couple of things, but I think we'll really be drilling down on all these things on March 10th.
Yep.
You know, deciding kind of, you know, how satisfied we are with what's been accomplished in these areas, and then do we want to continue that?
Yeah.
You know, in 2023, or do, you know, with the priorities that the commissioners are going to bring, you know, where do those line up, you know? So I think, I think I'll save, you know, our drill down for that.
Yes, yeah, I agree with you. I think there'll be a lot of conversation on beautification, and a couple of our leadership team members also talked about that as a continuing goal for those departments like downtown, you know, Chris Yarber, Public Works Director, talked about some opportunities downtown for beautification as well. Looking at community growth, we did enter into an interlocal agreement for that joint comprehensive plan with the county, so that process is just now getting started. A lot of opportunity there that will be coming up in the next year. We had six remote worker recipients. Again, we have more funding for that, so there's been discussions about how we can continue to use the funds to get remote workers to the city of Paducah. And then we have, upon the property owner's request, continued the consensual annexation, consensual annexations as they requested. So there'll be a lot of further opportunity with that comprehensive plan related to community On operational efficiencies, I really wanted to highlight our technology enhancements. That's really where we've looked internally with our new Chief Technology Director on board. We have made some advancements in working with an outside vendor on our GIS infrastructure. We also moved software into the technology department, which we've already seen a lot of operational efficiencies by not having them in city manager's office and able to use the full technology staff for software. We also, something we're really proud of is launched the online property tax payment proud of, is launched the online property tax payment so that people were able to pay online and not just have to come into the city. One of the operational efficiencies items was also elected officials meeting with our leadership team members to talk about different things happening in their departments and get your feedback on where you'd like to see some, you know, just based on those services that they're talking about. So we completed that over the summer. This actually got kicked off with a fire prevention, talking about the construction development process. And that really flows into the next item, which is striving for improvements in the construction development process. I wanted to highlight that we had 17 kickstart meetings, which is a new initiative related to those improvements in that process. And then we have been doing testing on the electronic permitting platform, and we're glad we did testing because we wanted users to come in and figure out what's working, what's not working, so that they had a really positive experience when we rolled it out community-wide. Based on that testing, we feel like we have the feedback and that we're going to roll that out community-wide this calendar year. Talking about downtown, downtown was really about supporting our businesses, you know, while we got the city block construction up and running. So there's a few items I really wanted to highlight. The first would be kind of the renewed downtown events and the refreshed downtown events. I think we had some really successful events with the Cocktail Trail and Art Walk. We had the Christmas tree. That was a great cross-departmental collaboration with Public Works, Parks, Planning, to really drive more people downtown and enhance the decorations. Then we also had a Fall Festival. So there's been a lot of staff effort and Main Street Board effort going into driving people downtown to support businesses with downtown events. We also had 13 net new businesses. The Main Street Board did complete a retreat, and we received the national accreditation. So a lot happening downtown to support our businesses, you know, while the city block construction is going on. Okay. Looking at housing, we really enhanced the surplus property process. We created a GIS map, and then also we made house plans available to anybody who bought surplus property. This had primarily been reserved for people working in the Fountain Avenue, but we were able to open that up citywide. So if you blocked surplus property, you actually came with house plans. We did sell seven properties in 2022. Also wanted to highlight that planning approved this past calendar year 196 multifamily units and 56 residential lots, which essentially translates into, you know, 56 new homes and 196 new apartments. Now, that are multifamily units, I guess I should say. That does not mean that they were built. This is just what was approved, and you could see kind of coming down the line in the next two to three years as our Plating Director described. We also have the South Side Committee, and they're really focusing on residential grants around beautification and stabilization. Nick provided an update during our retreat on Friday, and that will be a future item discussion of the board of really looking into those and then adopting in the near future. At this point, I will turn it over to the city manager.
So the next slide, we talked about minority and inclusion, and, you know, we had a good meeting last night with the PDAB, the Paducah Diversity Advisory Board, good conversation there. But our city is also taking the opportunity, as you heard last week, to partner with Murray State for a city organization diversity and inclusion assessment. It'll be spread out to all of our team members for an anonymous reply. The data will go back to Murray State, and then they will give us an aggregate of those responses. So we're excited to see how that that comes about. We also continued our partnerships on August the 8th, but entered into a new partnership last year with the Juneteenth event. And then, you know, the next item is the protecting of the key historical and cultural resources. We are working with organization to kind of look at recommendations for preserving some of those resources. We think, Mayor, you might have had a conversation today with next steps with with Brent Leggs and upcoming and finalizing that, but we hope to have that recommendation wrapped up, what, in the next 30 days?
Yeah, he, Brent will be back, he'll be in town March 20th and 21st, and so we've got some work to do to identify some key stakeholders in the community that we want to get to a meeting with him. You know, kind of a, I guess, a reception. So that just happened late this afternoon, so I'll give you an update. I'm thinking that we probably would like to use the your facilities over there, you know. So, but he's going to have some bullet point recommendations, not the full recommendations, but bullet points before he's back in town, so we can kind of have some, you know, a chance to weigh in before he writes the final recommendation, so.
And then also with our historical and cultural resources, you know, the community is well aware that the Cherry Civic Center has been shuttered for several years now. We did finally get the RFP out on the street, and that is, Amy, what's my date?
March 8.
March 8, thank you, for that RFP to come back. So we're excited.
Did you repeat that? March 8?
March 8.
Are the the bids are due back?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Yep. And, you know, we did have a little delay because of the accident that happened at the intersection where, you know, a semi truck entered to try to make it a drive-through in the building, and that delayed us of getting the RFP back and had to incorporate those those portions of the renovations. South Side, the Steering Committee on South Side had 10 meetings, and then also an community engagement event. Couple hundred participants that attended that event. So I think that was some some great feedback that came out of that. As we move forward with South Side, you know, the big thing that we're focusing on is some of the residential grants as we move forward. And then we also have a new inclusive playground upgrade scheduled at Coleman Park for this calendar year. And so so excited about what's still to come. There on the South Side, a lot of opportunity, and looking forward to continuing on those those conversations. One of the things that, you know, the trails and bike paths, I know, Mayor, this was was one of your priorities, and we didn't make the headway that we had hoped to on on that. We did, as you authorized earlier this evening, we are pursuing a National Park Service grant to assist with public input in developing a plan for the Greenway Trail expansion. You know, we already made the plans that if we're not successful of getting that grant and that that planning grant, which we feel we will be, of our next steps to continue on and how we how we take the next step to assess the public input and and actually develop a plan for the Greenway Trail and Bike Pass in the community. The city facilities, as we talked at our meeting last week, you know, we did increase the funding to start the facilities maintenance fund, and we started implementing that maintenance plan this year. And so for fiscal year 23, we'll we'll start making some better headways. You know, we we have a lot of deferred maintenance on our facilities, both that we occupy and those that are occupied by other members of the community or other organizations in the community. And so some 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 heavy conversation upcoming about how we continue to address those historically over the last decade or so, the deferred maintenance on those. Stormwater, you know, this past year, we really didn't have any of the major major floods that that brought stormwater for to the forefront. But in the last week, we've had some, some, the last couple of weeks, we've had some heavy rains, and it start there. It starts to to bring that conversation back forward. We did allocate $4 million in ARPA funds dedicated to projects such as the Buckner Bridge, 25th Street, and Central Avenue. You know, as you heard, you know, Chris Hughes at our meeting last week, stormwater, he didn't use it for stormwater, but I thought it was pretty apropos for stormwater. It's like a well eating a Tic Tac. You know, it's 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 a step, it's a little bit of a thing, but there's still a long way to go. And so that will continue to be a focus. And the outdoor sports facilities, we continue the dialogue, you know, the design phase for that, the Sports Commission, you know, Amy and I sat on the working group with that. We were meeting weekly up until recently. Now, those have moved to biweekly as we have pretty much wrapped up the design phase and start getting into construction document planning on that. So excited to see that. I know that had the opportunity to take Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Henderson over to Bluegrass Downs a couple of weeks ago and kind of get to, it's a blistering day, but I think kind of see what, you know, kind of the vision there. And so I welcome, you know, the rest of the commission to to get on schedule, and we can take you over there and look. And if you haven't been in in that facility.
I'd like to do that.
We'll need, and Steve Irvin was gracious enough to meet us over there and and drive us across the facility in his four-wheel vehicle.
That'd be great, actually.
So we'll get that. But we're excited about that to come. So that's a real quick highlight of of what we we did accomplish under the Board of Commissioners priorities for 2022, and be glad to entertain any discussion that you might have on those.
Well, like I said, I was going to save some of most of my comments for, you know, priority setting on March 10th, but I was just going through here and and in my own mind, you know, rating us on how well we did. You know, I think some some areas, we knocked it out of the park. Some areas, we didn't do so well. Some areas, we're still striving to do better. Overall, I'll give us a B. I'd give us a B average, you know, if you if I had to, if I had to give us a B average. So I thought that was pretty good. I know the staff put a lot of time and effort into it this year, you know, which I know the commission is very appreciative of. But I think the meeting coming up on March 10th is very important, you know, for us to set our priorities and to start the planning for, you know, for really finances, budget planning. So anybody else got any comments about the, we've got a couple of people that want to, or you want to finish up?
Michelle, is there anything else that you want to add?
Okay.
All right. I I will just say before we move on, you know, kudos to the team for the the hard work and, you know, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of hard effort amongst all the team members this last year to get that. And I think, Mayor, it's probably a fair assessment of a B. You know, we always, you know, look for ways to improve. There are some things that, out of our control, that take some of the bandwidth and and focus away. But, you know, 911, I think, you know, we still have a lot of work to do there, but there was a lot of, a lot of time and energy by our community members in that that group. And so, you know, I know we've taken the time to thank them, but I think I'd be remiss without thanking them again for those community members that served on on that 911 committee that really helped us get as far along as we are and made great strides on that effort. And so, and then just finally, Michelle, thank you for all the work.
Okay, we got a couple of, couple of people. First of all, Dewan Thomas, you got some comments that you wanted to make?
Are you doing time?
I'm sorry?
Are you doing time on comments?
Yeah.
Thought he's got on three minutes.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. However, it's unfortunate that I am having to speak here today. I'm Dewan Thomas, of course, and on the top of the commission priorities, especially when it comes to DEI, I have this question for Mr. Guest because accountability and transparency are very important in leadership. I wanted to ask why you were absent from the DEI training or discussion that was held by PDAB, and I'm asking as a private citizen, as a voter in the city, as a taxpayer, not as representative of the board, because the mayor, the city manager, HR, and other commissioners were all present. So why were you absent?
Was that last week?
It was yesterday.
Last night.
Dewan, I, you know, I think that's a conversation you can have with Commissioner Guest, you know, I mean.
Pretty available. Well, I mean, as, you know, with that being one of your priorities and something that you voted on, it would have been very beneficial to your image if you would have been there. But moving on, had not former Senate Commissioner David Guest appealed, and when I was waiting to unblock me on Facebook and follow me in such a petty way to show he's back in power, I wouldn't even be here today. And as it relates to the commission priorities and community growth, I would like it to be known that Mr. Guest also has power and freedom of speech because my artwork sits here in City Hall, and it's been sitting here for the whole month honoring Black History Month. And one of those pieces being Progress, where it displays your text messages alongside news articles from the 20s, 50s, and 60s, and some people have asked, you know, what does that have to do with you? And those articles all relate to the appeal and that Judge Tony Kitchen used to justify your appeal on freedom of speech. And I just want people to know, David Guest used case law from the 20s, 50s, and 60s to justify his appeal process to be back in this seat. Those are the same years that lynching was common. Those are the same years that mobs would kill and burn black people just for being black. The same years that civil rights was being fought for here in America, and those are the years that you used to justify your appeal to be back here. Hey, Mr. Guest, if you were an honorable man, you wouldn't continue to take the city through this turmoil that you're taking it through when charged with misconduct and removed from office. That should have been the end of this fiasco.
Dewan, Dewan, the comments are to be directed to the commission and are not to be directed to individual people.
Is Mr. Guest not a part of this commission?
I'm sorry?
Is Mr. Guest not a part of this commission?
As an individual, right.
But he's a commissioner, correct?
Right.
And no disrespect, but I can continue if that's okay. But however, you felt, he felt like nothing was done wrong, and I'm speaking to the commission as a whole. He felt like nothing was wrong. That's the same reason he failed to apologize to not only me but the community when the texts were brought to the public, and the reason he probably failed to attend the DEI training that you supported, and why you accepted $6,000 in back pay from the city for time you didn't even work when you were removed. Not only that, he's tried to use his power and influence to intimidate me, and let me tell you this, I've heard about the conversations behind closed doors, not only just about David Guest, but from other leaders in the community. And let me be clear, I can't be bought.
Your three minutes are up.
I can't be bullied, I can't be intimidated, I can't be controlled, and I can't be kept down. So please tell your buddies.
Dewan.
All that. And if I could just finish with one last thing, to the commissioners, I just urge you to hold each other accountable, be more transparent. And during this appeal process, if you can shake David Guest's hand, you can tell him he's wrong. And I've learned that the city likes to sweep things under the rug, but while I'm a leader in this city, these things will not be swept under the rug.
Dewan, thank you.
And I will close with this.
Thank you, Dewan.
Mr. Guest, resign from your seat, and I'm speaking to you as a citizen of this community.
Dewan, you won't be invited back if you don't move on.
Swallow your pride, humble yourself, pray, and be a better man.
Okay, the next person is a lady by the name of Martha. I don't want, I'm wanting, How?
Yes.
Yeah. Come on up, Martha.
Thank you.
I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for being here.
My name is Martha How. I reside at 5105 Hill Terrace here in Paducah, Kentucky. And the problem is stormwater. Every time there is a storm, as we had just the past few days, it flows through my yard. In fact, all over the, going into my house, the left side of the road. Now, what I can't understand is, the city put a covert there that is connected to our property, and to me, I did a little research, there is no water, there is no place for that water to go. It's my understanding that there should be sewage for that for that water to drain into purposely for that reason. Now, I had the city out there, I believe his name is Rick Murphy, and he said it was not his responsibility, it wasn't the city. He said it was the homeowners, which that's my husband and I. And the other day, I thought, well, I'm going to try one more agency here. That is JSA. He said that it wasn't his responsibility because he is with the county, and it is the city responsibility. And it seems to me that the ball is being passed from one, just back and forth, back and forth. I am, well, we are taxpayers, and I would love to have some answers to why the city isn't taking the responsibility of fixing a drain there. Because, see, no one, I mean, I didn't own that property, I've been there for 23 years. We didn't own it when the covert was installed there. But in the meantime, there are not only I that is involved, but there are people across in the back of us in Oakvee Avenue, that water goes there, and it's beginning to buckle up the street. Now, I was told by Rick Murphy that it was my responsibility, and I thought about that. And I thought, now, if I dig a trench and put and let that water just goes out in the back of us, well, it's going to be someone else's problem. Because the people in the back of us have back of us have problems already with this water.
Yes, ma'am. Let me suggest this. I'd like to suggest that we'll, we'll follow through on your concerns, and we've got your address. Did you want to say?
Well, if you'll just wait until after the meeting's over, I'll get a phone number for you, and I'll contact you tomorrow.
That'd be great, and I do have pictures, if you care to see it.
Okay.
Of that water.
Ms. Howe, I think I know you. You live in a mid-century modern kind of house on Hill Terrace?
I live on 5105 Hill Terrace, in between the duplexes.
Kind of a yellow brick?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I've been in your house. I used to live on Berry Court. I used to walk my dog.
You did. I think you came one, did you come one, one night to our house with the delivery?
Yeah.
Yeah, we remember him.
Anyway, nice, nice, nice to see you. I don't know how to take that.
Exactly where I am. Yes. That's us.
If you don't mind, to stay after the meeting, I'll get your number, and I'll contact you in the morning.
I would appreciate that. Thank you. We'll wait. Do y'all care to see the pictures?
Sure, yep. Thank you. Oops. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Howe? Is that Mr. Howe?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Get your glasses?
Okay, I think we're just about to finish up. Any comments from City Manager?
No, sir.
Any comments from any of the Commissioners?
No.
Are we good?
Good.
Are we good?
Yes, I thought someone else had a comment that had not signed up, so I was just checking on that.
Okay, okay. Oh, did I miss one? Oh, oh, yeah, I do. I actually missed two. Okay, George Thomas.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I'm here for one reason, two reasons. That's my stepson over at Darius Wilson, and I've been with him for 39 years. And the Paducah Police Department, he was assaulted and raped by my niece, and the Paducah Police Department come out there, send him someplace over your own lone oak road. I guess they're trying to say he's crazy, but he's got a whole lot of sense, and he's lying. And what I found out, but he's got some problems, some handicap problems. We're all handicapped. I'm handicapped for one reason, and I guess most black people know, because all black people are handicapped, handicapped in America, because we got the, we got the DNA from what you call the nigger, which is nothing but the slave. I'm, the nigger was a slave, and when you got that, I admire the nigger, and I wish to never got rid of the word, because that Paducah Sun Democrat, owner of the Paxans, my aunties and family was raised in West Paducah. And I'm 81 years old, and my grandma used to tell me stories about the Paxans, how they run, would go down in Mississippi, which they got a newspaper down there. And in 1957, I was one of the first blacks to go to Paducah, to Tillman, and when the, when we got ready to graduate, Alonzo Williams, Mr. Mulkey, Paducah Sun Democrat, decided they were going to let all three of us blacks graduate, walk across the thing. Only one black got up in 2010 and said she was the only black, and that was Shirley Titchworth, Shirley Massey, and it was me and Curly Hamper and her.
Mr. Thomas, you've only got one minute left.
Well, the one minute I'm going to tell you about, Curly Brown Jr. shouldn't be getting no honor because she raped my sister when she was 15 years old, had a baby by her, he's got a daughter named Quita Thomas, Quita Brown, and he come in on the day, she was three years old, over two years old, and he come in that day, and my family was talking about, he showed up that time.
Mr. Thomas.
And what he done, I'm not stopping.
Mr. Thomas, inappropriate.
George, I think it might be time to, we can talk about it later. Might be time, okay.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.